Joe. Mr. Hannah Bass.
I'm on, man.
I said, you're the climate man.
Oh.
In this building.
You're cold or hot or what?
I don't know. He did pretty good managing the climate about an hour ago.
Is he my colder, hot, real?
Hot, hot.
You're hot?
Miss Marilyn's. Oh, she too. Yeah, we're in.
Bill, did I say you'd be here? It's city council meeting for Beckley.
Have they opened up?
I think so. He's always attended live, but we'll, we'll go over two weeks from now if you want.
I'd like to.
Yeah, I would.
Feel like, yeah.
Yeah, they got a special public meeting tonight on their rate increases.
For taxes or what?
Just sanitary board, stormwater.
Oh, oh, okay.
There's a lot, a lot of people not for.
I don't know anybody that's ever for an increase anyway, either. Power company, what'd they ask for? Seventeen percent?
Come by here.
Right.
The kid.
It's just, I got three.
Maybe just stop in there and see. Everything turned out like.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
And then Bill, we see people, Charles. County Commission's. Barbara Charles listens to Reese, and she's meeting with God. County Commission.
Didn't do anything.
They do notice it. He's running, he's running.
Be a umpire.
It's retired.
Charge us. Yeah, I met, I met her last year. And then Dr. Douglas. They'll cut you off at three minutes. Now you have officially retired.
I knew. You always.
That's a job for Mr. Summer.
She's a psychopath.
Psychologist.
Therapy.
Yeah, private.
Some life organizations she's with.
With experience.
Yeah.
Yeah. A good season.
She was with somebody else.
You made the program, let's be real.
Land bar.
You made the program. Yeah, man. Take your, take your.
Yo, it's pastor. You're not going. Said he plays the piano.
And of course bass.
See, we lost our, and it's.
Really?
Brother.
Mr. Summer doesn't know that.
We got a couple. They don't want to.
The guy. Great. You know what?
Thank you.
I like, I like.
Yeah.
I told Cheryl, I said, John, what I wanted.
Anytime.
Hmm.
I don't know if that's a people sign down or.
Seen your paper.
Yeah.
I've seen that list.
What did they talk to? The other day. Yeah. I think given. Cause I noticed these.
I had him back as all the time.
You know, Tom.
Yeah, I saw that. And why, I do know who not.
I don't think you don't have a, a sack or something. My people. And Tim Metz, he from Beck.
Bro.
Yeah, she is.
Not even sir.
Diane. And he says she's here.
Yeah.
She is.
Might be all.
No, sorry.
She back there?
I just texted her. I just texted her. She said she was. I thought she was here. I thought I seen her.
Yeah. I thought it was the.
Hmm.
All right, Mayor, let's go. Five thirty.
Call this special meeting to order of the City Council for six, oh, five thirty P M. For April twenty sixth. Two things on the call. Purpose of the meeting is to discuss possible action. First is to. Well, let's just, I want to pop this here. The speakers first and the people first.
What's the first item on the agenda? Let's do, let's, let's do that first. That's my.
Mayor, may I ask a question of you? This is a special called meeting. And I know it's not long, but generally it's a matter of urgency or time. Are either one or both of these time significant?
Well, the reason I, the reason I called the meeting regarding the bank is because I didn't want to put it on a regular agenda. Cause the regular agenda would be very heavy as it is now, and I thought it would be a major issue should we look at separately. That was the reason for that.
Just, just check.
Yeah, cause I thought, even a regular meeting, you know how those get long drawn out. And you add this to it to be longer. All right, regarding of Don Phillips' work.
I, I called Don myself and, I mean, he wishes to stay on there. So, um, he didn't know why it was coming up, but he wishes to stay on there.
Yeah, and Mayor, we just appointed him or reappointed him in March. By seven and oh, oh vote. I, I just wondered what had maybe happened in the meantime.
I don't know. I don't.
Mayor, I've been told by Mr. Harding that Mr. Phillips does not attend the meetings. And right after we a, a, appointed him, he didn't attend the very next meeting. Uh, so he's kind of been an absent person relevant to the committee. Uh, and like I said, Mr. Harding was unable to be here because he goes to sleep at five o'clock. But he's the one requested that we reconsider our action. And again, as Diane says, he may want to stay, but if he wants to stay, why isn't he attending the meetings and serving?
Mr. Mr. Phillips emailed me. And said that his mother-in-law broke her hip. And he's, uh, didn't say for how long, but he said, I've got to deal with this situation in Florida for. He said, that's taking my priority right now. And.
I guess. Bill, apparently. One not attended?
Pardon?
Is he, is he the only one not attended meetings or?
According to the information Mr. Harding laid to me, and this not only has been in the last months or so, it's been kind of a habitual thing according to Gary.
I guess, Bill, well, I guess when we go to reappoint people, like we appointed him in March, does Gary have any say about us reappointing him?
Before?
Yes. I mean, who? When I, when I'm.
He might make recommendations, I think.
Right.
Still up to count.
And at the time I voted seven oh, I was unaware of that till after the fact.
I think we all were.
Yeah, but now that we've been made aware of it, uh, I think it is behooves us to address the issue in a responsible manner on behalf of the remaining members of the committee who do intend to participate.
I, I'd, I'd make this a suggestion, uh, that C. Major, uh, address, uh, a letter to Mr. Phillips. Ask him, tell him that we understand he has now a problem. Previous to that, that he's not been attending, and we didn't know if he's going to return. If he's not asked to be, to ask to resign.
I second Mr. Oxley's motion.
Whatever that was.
Is there a attendance policy for these committees? And like, is there a established attendance policy? I know you want to be there, but like, we have a good, like.
I don't think so. There's not one in writing as far as how many meetings you may miss or just like counsel.
It's just a matter of having a quorum. There are five members.
Okay, so one person.
So I do have a question. Are these meetings being changed? And I think they meet the first Monday of the month, correct? Are the meeting times being changed last minute? Like, is there a scheduling conflict or?
Not to my knowledge. I, I, I attended one actually this month. The first one I attended for a long time.
That would be my other question is, are they consistent? The meetings consistent?
To, to my knowledge, they are.
Bill, I had a question. You said you, and of course the motion's already there. You said you, was he there last month?
It was this month and no, sir, he was not.
And then I understand there's another meeting maybe next week?
I'd have to check, but. Uh.
I think so, but anyway, but again, I, I stand by my second and think it's very prudent what Mr. Oxley has suggested. And I move the previous question.
All those in favor, say not saying aye.
Aye.
Motion's pretty good, seven zero. Eric Kepper, you want to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I'll first start by saying that I am not a citizen of the city of Oak Hill. My address has been Oak Hill since I got married fifty-four years ago, and Oak Hill has always been my town. And I understand that there's just some discussion about whether to buy the BB and T Bank Building and use it for municipal purposes. And I can only say, oh, I wish you would do that. When I went away to college, uh, I would tell people, like, where are you from? And I say, Oak Hill. And he said, man, I gotta go there. You people from Oak Hill make it sound like it's the center of the universe. Now, when I go somewhere and I say I'm from Oak Hill, they say, now, isn't that close to Fayetteville? And that does not sit well with me. And I look at that beautiful building and ironically, uh, last year when I was watching the Hallmark movies on Christmas, they all had a beautiful center hall and Christmas in Oak Hill or Christmas wherever. And the city hall was a point of meeting for everybody. So I don't know what your plans are. I don't know anything, but I think that if the city of Oak Hill can buy that building, we would be back on our way to looking to the future. You know, we didn't get the Oak Hill Elementary School. That's gone. King Theater's been torn down. The Pure Oil Station on Main Street has been torn down. And I want our town, and I would love it if this particular group of council people would say, you know, we are, we're moving forward. And one of the ways we can move forward is to make the center of our town, something that people will flock to. And when other, when outsiders come in, they may see that, that, the center of town, and then look around at all those empty buildings and think, hey, this would be a good place to start a business. I want to bring my business here. And we don't have that. Here I am moving around, feel like that girl in Jeopardy. Okay. Um, we don't have that right now. We don't have anything right in the middle of town to make you think, I want to go there. So that's what I'm saying. I'm just saying, you all are good. You all have the city of Oak Hill and our whole area in your hearts, or you wouldn't be here because this is a thankless task many times. But I think you can thank yourselves and show people in the whole area that we're moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Or Sander?
I'll echo much of what Cherry was sharing about Oak Hill and, and I, I should, I'm remiss in not saying, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council members for allowing me to speak before you. I, I echo also Cherry with her address because I do live outside the city limits of Oak Hill with my heart and soul and, and my life has been spent in this community and have been an educator as she was in the community in Oak Hill Schools and still serve um, in that capacity as a educational curriculum specialist. Um, so I am passionate about Oak Hill and passionate about the direction that we go. The BB and T Newver Bank Building is, is the center of our town. Once upon a time, Danny Wright could stand up and give us a history lesson here about the, the Bethel Church and, and how that was the center crossroads of, of where we are. Um, it is a vital piece of property. Um, it's a beautiful structure. And that is, uh, that's a piece of property that when people go through our town, they're like, oh, wow, look at that. You know, it is, it is a centerpiece. Uh, it's, yeah, and you think to yourself, you know, what can the city of Oak Hill do with it? I think there's a plethora of different things that we could do with that. Yes, it could be a city hall, but it's also a community center. Last Friday, there was, there was some sort of band playing up there. And, you know, I remember when I was younger and skinnier and had hair and those kinds of things that, uh, we, we saw lots of bands and performances that was our, before we had an amphitheater, that was our crossroads. And that's, that's where everything happened. Um, it is a vital piece of property that I think that if acquired, we could do wonderful things with maybe more than just the city hall. Uh, we look at that and we say, well, do we really need it? We look at the facility we have here and, and this is, this is adequate. This is a, this is a sound building. Um, and we say, is that something that we should be doing? But when you look at property like that, you know, they say in real estate, it's, it's location, location, location. And I would hate to see the property fall in disarray because every time I go past, I think, oh, gosh, they need to paint this. They need to paint that. Look at that window. When is the grass going to be mowed? Those kinds of things. Um, and I would hate to see it go in wayward ways. You look at that and you say, was city business to preserve property and to do things with it? Um, we can look at our neighbors. We can look south to Beckley. And being in Oak Hill, we, we've often looked at Beckley in a competitive sense, especially in the school system. But when Black Knight fell into disarray and, and the Justice family number, no longer had it, Beckley stepped up and took Black Knight and they've done something with it. And I'm not saying that we want to be Beckley necessarily. But we have a piece of property that is just as vital. It's our past. It's our present. It's our future. The Newver Bank Building can serve this city in a, in a variety of different ways. And, um, I'm passionate about it. I don't know all of the secrets that you guys know, the financial bits and those kinds of things, and you're the experts. And again, I, I give platitudes for you, for your service and what, what you're doing. Um, but from just a, a local citizen, and as I look at that property and as, as I look at my town that I'm passionate about, um, I think I would be proud of the city. I think I would be happy to see that building saying city of Oak Hill on it and to see us do things with it. So, uh, for what that's worth, I wanted to share my two cents worth as to why I think that property would be a really big deal for our city. We look at Fayetteville, we look at Mount Hope, we look at our communities around and I, I love those places because being in the school system, I, I feel like they're all my concerns, but, uh, I, I, as far as Oak Hill goes, I think that piece of property can mean something for us. Do we need it? I don't know how we can, I don't know how we can say to ourselves, well, let's just step aside and, and see what fate brings for us. Because I think it's something that would be vital to us. I think it's something that, uh, could really take us into the future. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Mike Fox?
Kind of hesitant of speaking because the camera's directly behind me and I'll probably block half of the crowd here, but, um, what a golden opportunity that he, that the city of Oak Hill has to, to purchase that building. Um, it's also, it's very hard to follow educators too. So with their nice language and everything of that nature, but, um, we, I'm not gonna say you, I'm gonna say we have an opportunity to, to get that building and do great things with it. Um, a lot of history behind that building. When New River Banking and Trust was falling apart in Thurman due to the depression and Nicole was leaving Thurman, the directors of New River Banking and Trust wanted to move a little bit up this way. A relative of mine had that corner lot there. He was one of the first Dennis, probably was the first Dennis in Oak Hill. We, Mr. Duncan owned that lot, founding member of the Brethren Church relative of that. He sold that lot to New River Banking and Trust in nineteen thirty-five for ten thousand dollars. That's a lot of money in nineteen thirty-five. A lot of money. And the money that you could be spending for that building probably is a good bit of money. I don't think you could rebuild that building for what you could pay for. None of us can. But what a golden opportunity we have to make that a cornerstone building in the center of Oak Hill. I contacted an educator today and asked him to do a survey in his civics class. I said, by a raise of hands, how many of your students know where the current city hall in Oak Hill is? Forty-nine out of eighty knew. Most taking granted. Some of those kids are from Mount Hope, the Valley, Fayetteville. He did say that the majority of the kids did know. Some did not. I think that would make change a little bit if that was in the middle of town. This building here is great. A lot of history behind this building. A lot of great decisions have been made in this building. The city was made in this building, nineteen twenty-eight. Been here a while. Think long and hard. This is an opportunity that we can't let us by. And I'm going to echo Mrs. Peppers. We've lost so much. Country Club, Pure Oil Station. I'm a history man. We can't afford to lose a building like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, there ain't much to say after all that. I mean, honestly, that's about, um, yeah, that sums it all up. Um, again, I mean, I, I echo a lot of what they said. I mean, pretty much they said it all. Um, the only thing is, is, uh, at first I was a little bit hesitant of that building. Cause I heard some rumors about what it was, but I do understand that we, uh, now have the studies to back up that it is a safe and sound building, and I've checked on to them myself. So, I mean, honestly, I mean, just the, the little, um, street dance they had the other day out in front of it. I mean, honestly, that speaks volumes to the city. I mean, you got your citizens out in front. I mean, if that was a city hall and you got your citizens out front representing, I mean, that's, that says a lot. Um, and, and I think that it'll be for future reference. I mean, the parking's good behind it. I mean, there's room there to do what you need to do. Uh, I know the property goes kind of, kind of at an angle back toward the, uh, Belland Building, but like I said, there, there's room to, to expand, to do different things if you need to do different things. So honestly, I think it'd be a, a wise choice. I think that building, um, you can't build right now for what you can buy. I mean, you just can't do it. I mean, I deal with it every day. Um, but other than that, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us up to the second point on the call, the discussion and possible purchase.
Mayor, before we begin the discussion, I would like to note that the email you received said I had canceled this. I had requested this meeting. Uh, no reflection on him. I did not request this meeting. Uh, now, I, while I agree with and concur with it, I don't have the standing to request the meeting. For council members, I think, maybe think about the church constitution, but, uh, the mayor did request it. Uh, but I want to be sure that every, all my colleagues understand this was not my request, and I do repeat myself, concur and think it's time to make a decision up or down.
As I recall in the March meeting, Counselor Perry, you made the motion and I seconded that we would commit to one of the following options. Build a new city hall, purchase the former BB and T building, refurbish the current city hall building, and cost estimates will be obtained for each option. Do we have those that you're aware of?
Pardon? Are you asking me to yield?
No, 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 no. I just asked you a question about.
And you want me to yield and answer your question?
If you need to yield, yield.
Well, I think we have handled or had this situation in front of us since October of twenty-one, uh, which is some seven months. And while I supported that motion, I got figures and numbers on BB and T building. And if I recall, uh, in December, you, and prior to that, you got motion, you got numbers per square foot for new structure. And if I recall in December, you were going to give us a footprint from, uh, Thresher. If I recall correctly, and I can be corrected, but at this point, I will repeat what I said, you know, while I advocated one of the three, I think it's time to make a decision seven months later in the interest of the city, in the interest of the future, in the interest of what may or may not happen in that building. Uh, I think someone mentioned the country club. We've passed that up. Also understand that the city at one, one time had an opportunity to purchase that building for far less than what we may or may not pay today. Uh, which, you know, I think that speaks volumes in itself when we delay and keep delaying. So, you know, it's up to the council to vote yes or no. And again, I would, I would support what's before us. If that answers your question.
It answers it, but not to my satisfaction.
I'm sorry.
Again, you not only supported the motion, you made the motion. And I, and I seconded your motion. And it went seven to nothing.
Don't disagree with that. So, so if that satisfies you.
So, I, I think we need to have this open discussion. This is a good time to have. Tonight's not the night to take the vote.
Then would the gentleman yield?
Sure.
When would be seven months later?
Uh, you seem to be itching about, and there's such a hurry, such an urgency to purchase this building. Maybe you'd share that reason with us.
I think I shared it just a few minutes.
Not to my satisfaction.
Well, I'm sorry I don't satisfy you, Tom. I've tried.
I'd like to say something. I gotta stand up though. Both of you. Uh, back in March, uh, we did have to talk about the options. And I know it's been seven months, but to spend that kind of money for what we have, I mean, we really need to. I mean, everything needs to be gone over. Um, yes, it's a beautiful building down there, but we have so much that we need to revitalize right here in our own city. I mean, I work right across the street. I see this every day for the last forty-five years. We've got a lot of ideas that we've put out there. Now we have the money behind us to align our storefronts, to get a unified look in the city, which is what we've been after. Streets need done, which that's something, the paving, the sidewalks. I mean, we have an opportunity to spread this money out to make all the city of Oak Hill from whatever that Mexican restaurant is up through here. Everyone can benefit from this. Um, the BB and T building, yes, it's in the center of town. But for the amount of money that they're asking plus renovations, we dump all of that into one place. Then we don't have anything to revitalize the rest of Oak Hill. And that's all that we've been asking for, or I've been asking for since I've been on council, is to get a, a uniform look in these buildings that aren't being used, that have curtains up or whatever, to make these owners more responsible or pay a fee. I mean, there has to be something done to get a more uniform look and a line look on Main Street. And I think it's there. Uh, we can do it. We have funds that we can use. Uh, whether we assess that to the property owner or, you know, make a law. That's what we do here in city hall. Um, making a amendment to something that if you're on Main Street, have a building on Main Street, then it has to be aligned with everyone else on the street. It's a lot of money involved. And to make quick rush. It's a lot of money involved and to make quick rush decisions, uh, you want to say seven months. Well, you know. I'm not comfortable with rushing into BB and T when we have the whole city to think of. So. I just wanted to, I just felt like I had to stand up and say that. But, you know, I'm not in favor of making that decision tonight.
Thank you, Diane. I'd like to comment too for some of our speakers. I respect everyone's opinion. We all have. I'm not saying mine's any better than anybody else. But like Ms. Kepfer said, we may have information that others might not have. I've known three of the four speakers for more than fifty years each. Mr. Willis, I haven't known that long. And I know your interest for the town are true. I don't, I don't debate that matter. There are a couple of things, some of the people that I've talked to in the last couple of days. My councilman from Mendon, Steve Hazlitt, we talked the other night on the phone, although we disagree, he's for it and I'm not. Uh, I listened to his reasons. I met with Mr. Sumder coming in. We had a mini discussion, but. I disagreed with him. You know, he meant, you know, we don't want to let it sit there and deteriorate. And I agree. But I don't know that we're in the rescue mission either. And Mike Fox, uh, I've, I've known him when he was honorary and, uh.
Yesterday.
Not counting last week. But, and I know that Mike and his family, we're all, I've been here seventy-seven years. Except for the time that I've been out of state, uh, working or into college or in the military. This is home, always will be. I hope to die, but here, but not soon. But what my, you know, and we were talking about, Steve mentioned to me that he thought we needed a bigger council chambers. Well, folks, if you look at the gross building area for BB and T, it's only fifty-nine hundred square feet. And that came from the appraisal that Mr. Tollard did. Whereas the gross building area of this city hall is fifteen thousand square feet. Now, could it be refigured for a larger council chambers? Possibly. I don't know that there's a need. This is the most I've seen in here since several years ago when Mr. Mike Bone appeared before council and we had standing room on. But. We also, when we were doing the budget workshops, several of the members of the council. And I agree with them wholeheartedly, said we need to put some of our, ARPA money. And possibly even a one percent sales tax into outdoor recreation, particularly with respect to those with disabilities. And I'm talking about mobility, vision, all the things. There are a lot of things that our young and old people alike cannot do because they have certain restrictions. So, yes, we can do some of those. We do have some money. And I thank everyone to a person, even the person that I disagree with. Wants to spend that wisely. So I'll, I'll never, I'll never say that's not true. So I think we need to be careful about it. Seven months is a long time. But not when you're talking about spending hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I, I really don't know at this point and. And, and Counselor Perry, I mean, if, if we are to discuss a purchase price, we can always go into executive session. Uh, to, because it's still probably in negotiation. So I don't think any of us here know what the. Pro, uh, purchase prices, if, if anybody's, has been, I don't know. That's just a few thoughts I have. I just don't want people to go away tonight thinking, well, he doesn't care about. What our feelings are or what we want to see happening. I do. So, that's it. Thank you.
I have some, Mayor. Um, I also agree with Diane and Tom that we did vote in March to see. The financial information on all three options. As good stewards, I think we're fiscally responsible to see all of the options and all the finances related to those options before we make a decision. Because it is, it, all three options would be expensive. And there are lots of things that we could do with the city's money, programs that we can develop. Commercial building facade programs, small business development programs, lots of things that I think would help revitalize our community. Um, and I agree with everything Diana said. We have a, an entire city to take into consideration, not just one building.
Any other comments?
Mayor, I'm sorry.
I'd like to add something. I do agree with my colleagues, both for and against, make good arguments. As far as seven months, we've kicked this thing around since twenty eighteen. Mr. Fox brought it up on council. When he was on there that he'd like to see the city pursue that. I think it got away from us then. I don't want to see us lose that opportunity again. I think as far as the streetscape that we're talking about, that is great as far as fixing up Main Street, everybody. If the city takes the first step. Fixes up the BB and T building as a centerpiece of town, other people will kick in and start doing it too, without a whole lot of prodding. I think would be great for our city. It'd be a great centerpiece. And I think we need to move. And now's the time before we lose it, just like the country club.
Thank you, Mayor. I have some information I'd like to give to each council member. Uh, as you recall, in December, I suggested or indicated we'd have a report from the engineers and architect. I'd like to give each council member a copy of this at this time. You'll take it and pass it around. The school teacher will show out, show in. Have another documents I'd like to make available. And this is the Hayes Micro Bio Consulting Firm. Who did the analysis of mold that has constantly been an issue. And we talked about that. That that's been an issue. And also, meeting before last, I talked specifically about certain people. Or persons who suspected they got mold from there when in reality it's another place. But if you can understand this, you do more than I can. But. Uh, I simply say this, when gentleman was there doing the inspection and Day Day was with him, I simply asked him from the layperson. Is, does the building have mold? His response was no. They checked off three floors, he did air samples, and you have the report in front of you. As far as the price that we would be looking at, I think it's sad. That this. Part of, or some of, or all of in two thousand eighteen, had the option to purchase that building for three hundred thousand dollars and took no action. Four years and seven months later, again, I'll say it's time to take action. And the price for that is, is being asked. And it was negotiated. It was, it wasn't negotiated that we would settle on it, knowing, realizing that it's a responsibility of council. To accept or reject. But on numerous occasions, and Mr. Hamlet, I think you were at the first meeting, if I'm not mistaken. Council did approve and appointed committee to look at, discuss prices and come to some decision. And the price that is being asked for that building is six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Which it was appraised at four hundred and fifty-four thousand. Minus the equipment and furniture that's in it. Now, uh, is that unreasonable? Maybe yes, maybe no. But, you know, I fear what may come with that building. What it could become, what may happen to it. And we all know, we're losing another business on Main Street, the floral shop. Since, so we've had a vacant building set there. We're going to have another one. Uh, and we talked about, someone talked about, uh. Uh, the need. Well, this building was built or finished in nineteen twenty-nine at a price of sixteen thousand dollars. During that period, over a period of time, if you'll recall, there's been additions made to this building. There's been additions because of need, because of present need and future need. We had the fire department moved. We built a fire station for a million dollars. We're considering in less than seven months. To approve and add addition to that fire station at approximately one point two million, I heard this evening. Quite an investment. Quite an investment when the original billion was one million dollars. We built a police station because it was futuristic. We needed it. We needed it for officers at a cost of one million dollars. All of that's been paid off. Someone, Councilman Janey, talked about monies. It's very clear. That we, ARPA monies cannot be used for this building. We had a town meeting and we heard the town significantly say that they wanted these monies to be spent for parks and recreation. Streets and drainage. I think I heard that, which we all agreed to do that. Now, we prepared a budget, which is a very good budget. We've given raises. And justifiably so, so as we have consistency with our people and our working people. So in terms of the cost of this building compared to what we are paying for other costs. And we didn't question, and I certainly informed the fire department, building, I certainly informed the parks. I certainly informed sidewalks, the drainage and the police station and was at that time. Because of the legislature, I got money for the police department. Because there was oversight or for whatever reasons, funds were not approved to supply equipment. So in my favor of it, yes. Let me go back to nineteen twenty-nine where I talked about, uh. Where this building had to be updated. Now, in terms of a need, I would suggest to council, there is a definite need now. This building is not ADA compliant. Uh, people can't get to the second floor. They can't get to the third floor. We have a GIS fellow that lo, is located now in a, a lounge area which suffices. Along with what's used to be a conference room and a conference room for the fire department. We have a lady. On the third or second floor who has an office in what is, uh, was known as a, as a storage hall. It suffices, but it's away from the other people. At the request of supposedly the new economic development coordinator, she requested to go to the train station. Which again, I would suggest is not very, uh, slightly for that situation. Which also on many occasions, I see her here, having to meet with the city manager who supervises her. Which would be great if she was under the same roof. So is this building satisfying the need? I don't think so. The mayor has requested an office for, ever since he's been mayor. That has not been provided. Where do you put it? Where do you expand? As the city expands, the needs of the city expands, then we need to be mindful of allowing for that expansion. As the city expands, as the staff may or may not expand. So, uh, it's as Mr. Fox pointed out. This building served well in its time. Its time has come. And our forefathers did an excellent job of seeing things happen. It's been added on, it's been reconfigured. And I say that to say this. Is it identified well? Does it represent the city well? Is it, uh, a GM? I submit, in my opinion, at this time in history, it doesn't. So for that, and the fact that we just had a meeting, which the city manager allowed me to. Tune in by radio because I forgot about it, but heard us, uh, a conversation around streetscape. And I think Steve or someone alluded to this. You know, we advocated, and Diane said, I've advocated this for years. How can you expect your neighbor to make improvements, to come on board if we're unwilling to? So in my mind, this would be a model and an example of what we're asking our entrepreneurs, businessmen to do. It would be the first. Is it in the center of town? Is it a centerpiece? Yes. Is it a billboard? Yes. Would it be a billboard? Now, we don't like to hear about Fayetteville. We don't like to hear about Mount Hope. We don't like to hear about Beckley. We don't like to hear about Montgomery. But look what's going on around us. These people, Montgomery has done it, Beckley's done it. Uh, Fayetteville has made tremendous strides in the last month or so because of monies. Uh, and, and I think it's time that we move forward, that we follow suit. And that's not to, uh, uh, take a building to rescue. That's not the intent of all. The, the, the reason for taking the building is to be futuristic, provide for present needs, which is inadequate, and future needs. Streetscape, as I said. You know, there was discussion about that. Uh, Ms. Janey suggested, and I don't know the answer to this. We'd ask that Bill Faubier. I don't think you can ordinance what a person can do with their building or not build. I think you can encourage it. I think you can provide the example or the model. And ask them, just as we asked Mr. Phillips, would he or would he not? And hope they come on board. I would hope that at such time, that we do the ARPA money, which cannot be used for the bank building. It cannot be used. Any money presently committed in the budget cannot be used. Uh, for, for this building. Uh, I would hope, uh, that, that, uh, we would be open minded. I would hope. We would be futuristic. Uh, and that we would identify, as my colleague said, monies, we've spread monies out a long ways. And persons who have been here prior to us have taken care of streets. We suggested, as I said, parks and recreation, streets and sewage as the ARPA funds. I would also suggest relevant streetscape and hope at some point that we would set aside money in that streetscape or that ARPA money. To provide grants to those businesses who will modify, beautify, update their buildings as part of that ARPA money. I'm only one of seven, but I hope we get to additional discussion on allocation. We would do that. It's been said, it's the center of town. It's a billboard. It's premier. It's a gem. It's a gem to the city. If you've been to other cities in other states, in the center of their square or in the center of their, their building. They've got their city hall. It's very prominent. It's very present. It's very alluring to people who come through. And it sends a loud message. Now, we've talked, cost six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. The best numbers that I can lay on is the numbers that Mr. Ockley gave us per square foot. Which if you, and, and in informal discussions with the architect engineers, if you were to build a liked building. It would cost over four million dollars. Now, we passed it up for three hundred thousand. They want six hundred and forty-five. One of the business entrepreneurs said, okay, you guys want to sit around and pay a million for it three years from now? If, if it's still available. So, uh, with all that said. Uh, I certainly am in favor of. Uh, I think this building, in this humorous way of saying, you can take a pig. And put lipstick on it, but it's still going to be a pig. So nineteen twenty-nine, how much can you beautify it? To move it out of town, in my opinion, would be a mistake. We talked last council meeting, you helped me out here, Mr. City Manager, about the construction of a community center or what was it?
Community center.
Community center and securing. Uh, entitlement funds or funds from the federal government. We've missed that date, folks. Joe Manchin's date was May the tenth. Capito's date was the twentieth, for next year's month. But while we consider that, this building, if we're talking renovations, could be used for a convention center. A senior center with weights and so it's with some modifications and removals of walls. Now, someone said, said, uh, renovation of the bank building. We went threavens when they looked at their bank building that they took. We went to Montgomery, looked at Montgomery's. That building can be used tomorrow without any major renovations. So we'd come back to this council, back to the city manager, as to whether renovations would be done. Now, in the report, it suggests renovations. But again, it isn't necessary. The only two things that they feel is necessary is a fire escape and ADA compliant restroom. So. So, again, obviously I think the time has come. I think we've been very prudent. I think we've done our due diligence and it's time to vote it up or down and make a decision. Also, I would say that the market right now is kind of steady at a four point one interest rate. It's my understanding that they're projecting that it will go up. So the longer we wait, the more it could cost, if, and the more would cost for construction, new construction. Located out of town where employees or people who would visit may, wouldn't necessarily stop at Wynn's. Wouldn't necessarily stop it at Cafeteria one ten or the businesses that we have or necessarily stop by the ice cream shop. Uh, of course, East End's another area to me that's dear, that needs attention. And now, but this would be a start. It would be a start, send a message. And for all of those reasons, I would advocate that we make this decision tonight, that we move forward at this time. Uh, and if you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to yield to your questions.
Well, I, I will say one thing, I'm definitely in favor of it.
You said we should move now or are you prepared to make a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I am. Uh, I have four motions and I will give Ms. Johnson a copy of those motions. Let me also commend her. I contacted her over the weekend. She was off Friday, but it wasn't either. She was very responsive, very gracious and kind with a response. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Motion number one, I'll give this to you, Mayor. I'll give a copy too, because in the past we had some confusion to get the motion straight. So motion number one would be, I move that the city of Oak, the Oak Hill City Council purchased the former BB and T building at one oh one Main Street East, Oak Hill, West Virginia for a purchase price of six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to include closing costs from Gray Mill Holdings LLC. And I would ask for a second.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Any more discussion? If not, first call roll.
I'd ask for a roll, yes.
Councilman Hazlett?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Uh, yes.
Smallwood?
Yes.
Counselor Oxley?
No.
Counselor Janey?
No.
Counselor Hodges?
No.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
The motion is agreed to, four to three.
With that motion, Mayor, I have a second motion. I move that the Oak Hill City Council authorized the Oak Hill Building Commission to act as the physical agent for the purpose of entering into a lease purchase agreement with Gray Mill Holdings for a cost of six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to include closing costs. And I would like to have a second.
What was that motion again?
I move that this Oak Hill City Council authorized the Oak Hill Building Commission to act as the physical agent for the purpose of entering into a lease purchase agreement with Gray Mill Holdings for a cost of six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to include closing costs.
Are they financing the building? Is Gray Mill, Gray Mill Holding financing the building for us?
My other motion will speak to that, Demeter. Let, let me say this. There are three ways that you could finance this bill. Uh, number one, there has to be a non-committed fund uh, that has not been committed. But you can do enterprise fund obligations, which does sewer systems, parking systems, so forth. Or you can do lease purchase obligations, which would be like, uh, police cruisers, TIFs. Uh, and that is suggested that that process would be handled according to bond attorneys through the building commission. Uh, the second way is a special fund obligation, which is not recommended, uh, which requires a sixty-eight percent vote of the citizens as a special election. And this council's alluded to cost of special elections in the past. So it has been recommended that the lease purchase obligation would be the best process. Also, I understand in talking to, uh, bond attorneys that there are many, many of these projects going on throughout the state of West Virginia at the present time. And it's an opportune time based on the interest rate to do so.
Yes, but your motion says to enter into a lease purchase agreement with Gray Mill Holdings.
With Gray Mill Holdings, the city council authorized the Oak Hill Building Commission.
Right, but.
To act as the physical agent for the purpose of entering into a lease purchase agreement. That's one of the three processes.
Right.
Gray Mill Holdings is the owner of it.
They are.
They are not going to finance, no.
Okay, but so we're not entering into a lease purchase agreement with them. We're just buying, you're asking the building commission to purchase the, um, property from Gray Mill Holdings through a lease purchase agreement with some financial company.
Act as the fiscal agent.
Well, you said that, but.
Did I?
Yeah. What, what we do is the building commission, we have to get rates and find out who is the best.
And I'm saying let them act as the fiscal agent.
Right, so.
Upon the suggestion of council.
Right, but Gray Mill Holdings is not, they're not. The lease purchase agreement is not with them, it's with whoever.
Yes, yes, you are correct. Yes. You are correct, I mean.
So what would be the typical steps, Demeter, to do this?
Normally what we do is, um, well, actually the building commission really doesn't do much. I'll get the rates all together, get the financing ready. Um, the bond attorney will get the building commission together and lead them through the process. They have to have some meetings and do some things, um, after council authorizes them to do it. But it's just, it's just a formality, the things that they, that they do.
That who does do it?
That the building commission does.
I, I, and, and I think what has been suggested by bond counsel is that that is the proper group to negotiate, to decide to bring back the council. And they would do all of the, let, let me read my fourth motion. This may clarify. And if you feel like I need to amend motion two, I would be happy to amend it to your satisfaction.
Well, it's fine with me.
Okay. So leave it as is. No, no, I'm not withdrawing. Uh, let me read motion four. Uh, which may add some clarity to the questions that have been asked. I move that the Oak Hill City Council employ on behalf of the City of Oak Hill Building Commission, Steptoe and Johnson as the official bond counsel. And Steptoe and Johnson would handle everything that you talked about, which means you wouldn't have to. Which at one point you indicated, hey, I'd prefer not to be involved in that, in the fire department and some of the other projects. So in an attempt to relieve you of some of that, pardon?
I don't remember saying.
You said I might retire if I had to do all this, if I remember correctly. But again, I could be in error and if I am, I apologize to you. But since we don't take, uh, extensive minutes, uh, that's, that's what I remember. So I think number four clarifies number two. So, and as I've said previously, it has to be an uncommitted funding source. Present budget can't do it. ARPA can't do it. BNO taxes can't do it. So three, I'll read three too, for those that would like to listen. I move that the Oak Hill City Council authorized the Oak Hill City Manager and or Treasurer to make installment payments from revenue generated revenue from the one percent sales tax to the Oak Hill Building Commission on behalf of the City of Oak Hill for said purchase. I also have heard about being a council, that it's been projected that that one percent sales tax will generate about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars up to a possibility of one point two million. It's my understanding that if, if we can go into fifteen year or twenty year indebtedness, that the payment would range somewhere between four thousand and five thousand dollars, which means if it was upward of five thousand, that's sixty thousand dollars. In my mind, when you look at seven hundred and eighteen thousand or one point two, you're going to have a considerable lot of money left, Ms. Janey, to do other projects with, uh, based on those projections. So those would be the four motions, but I would like that we consider them in order because one builds on the other and it would tie the package up neatly based on, uh, council's opinion, bond counsel. Bond counsel also said they have worked quite extensively with Bill File and find him to be very agreeable and satisfactory and probably one of the best city council or city attorneys in the state of West Virginia. So they trust each other.
Can I, can I just say a few things? That I think, I mean, this makes a little more sense to me. We've, you know, we financed the fire department and the police station and we used the building as collateral. Those all, I mean, those are coming out of our, this police department payments come out of our general fund and so did always the fire department. I'm not saying that it's bad to, to do the, uh, one percent sales tax. That's a good revenue stream, I believe. And then normally we I asked around to bond councils and see how much they're going to charge us for us and try to get a better rate. Uh, I love John Stumpf. I've worked with him several ti- I've not, I have not worked with him several times. I haven't worked with him any, but I know him very well. And he's a good bond attorney. In the past, we've used, um, Cam Seacrest with Bowls Rice. He's also a very good bond attorney and I've usually have been able to get a better price from him. I'm not saying that it's the same this time. And then they, once we pick the bond attorney, they lead you through the process, just like Mr. Perry said. They'll, you know, they lead you right through it. Help us get the building commission, all the minutes ready for that, all the meetings and everything that has to be done. So that's just my two cents on the experience that I've had with this kind of.
And I respect that and this may be a little different than what you've done in the past. And part of the reason is that is because it's been indicated, we need monies for other projects and so forth. And this would allow that to occur. Let me also say that bond counsel has over thirty-some year experience and a staff of five that deals solely with this process. And I feel very comfortable that they, again, I indicated the number of projects that are going on throughout the state of West Virginia. And I feel very comfortable that way would negotiate for us the very best, the very best rates that they could get for us. And that would involve several banks, uh, or purposes who businesses or that would finance it. So again, I think it ties it all up in a neat package. It doesn't allow to string out and it's all been presented, due diligence has been done. And, uh, that's all I could offer at this point.
So you're, you're back to, you, you make the motion for number two?
Number two, yes.
I got some questions. I mean, I'm just, I'm, because I don't know what I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit confused what I'm voting on. And that's what I'm trying to figure out, like, it sounds like kinda we're going to go through it. Are we going to go through that same process? I guess what I'm asking, do we need motions for something that we're going to go through anyway? When I'm, because I'm just confused why, what are we?
Bond counsel, based on the, uh, uh, let me look at, look at my paper here. The, the, the second process being used suggests and advises that we should go through this process. Legal opinion, practicing attorneys that does this every day for multiple cities and multiple projects. Councilman Jackson?
Normally we do go through this process that it's the same, but I always, they always give me a worded motion that.
And I would suggest that this word motion came from council. And they strongly advised, strongly advised that we go through the building commission and, and entertain these four motions.
Did they prepare all the motions?
Four.
Okay. But, because, and, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to interject in council's decision of policy or decision to buy this, but your council should have told you that the, uh, building commission shall not undertake any project without a resolution.
And that would come later, council said. Once they put together the timelines, the additional meetings that would be held and a resolution that would be adopted. You are correct, Bill. Uh, wouldn't be part of the action tonight.
I would.
And was not advised that it should be.
I would. Let me, I, I, because I, I just don't, I just don't want to misstep. Let me, uh, let me show you the, the, uh, ordinance that, that says that and you all can interpret it however you want, obviously, but. It'll take just a moment, come on the screen. Uh, let me see if I can make that any bigger.
I think state code eight thirty-three governs building commissions. I also think this process has been court tested in the state versus Clarksburg Municipal, Spelsburg, one ninety-one, one ninety-one, West Virginia Code five fifty-three, four forty-seven, Southeast, Second Edition sixteen, nineteen ninety-four, which involved the construction of a Clarksburg municipal building. Now, also I, I understand and know that this was a SBA court case as well. So everything I've stated here tonight has been tested.
Well, it's, it's in the code there, the West Virginia Article eight dash thirty-three is in the.
Yeah, I just alluded to that, yes.
It, it's, and it's on the screen in front of me, but.
What are you saying, Bill?
I just, I just want you to, to, to understand that the council plan had to pass a resolution. I would do it now, of course, we don't have the resolution, but you're going to absolutely need the resolution to authorize the building commission. It, it, it says the building, the commission shall not undertake any project or exercise any of the powers authorized by the West Virginia Code eight dash thirty-three in support of furtherance of any project unless such project is first approved by council and the commission authorized by the council to do so by resolution.
And as I said, council advised that when they put a timetable together with additional meetings, additional notices, meetings, that that resolution could, should be adopted at that, at a future time.
The, okay, the council you talked to?
Yes.
Mr. Stumpf?
There were two councils there that day.
We're, um.
Mr. Stumpf and Jaclyn, I don't remember what Jaclyn's name was. And we went through a very extensive discussion of public finance one oh one. Because when it gets in the bonds and the process and so forth, I think. because when it gets into bonds and the process and so forth, I think their experience.
Is, is not the.
Could we not?
Is not the second motion about authorizing the commission to do, enter this agreement, is that could not be ordered as the resolution?
Sure.
That we are authorizing the Building Commission to move on this?
Well, this is a suggestion, I don't know if you think it's, I don't, I don't think it's going to hold up anything, but why could we not, you've already agreed to purchase the building, and why could we not just next appoint him as the bond counsel and then do the other things the way we should do those?
Well, when you say should, I think we're doing it a way that is acceptable. Want to get into a discussion. And if number four would do that, Domeno. And number three, designates a committed fund that has not been dedicated, which it must be if we use the second process. Now, as Steve suggests, if he would like to amend number two to call this the resolution, I certainly would support that and consider that to be appropriate based on your recommendation, Bill.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I think you'd have to do the resolution, and it's not, it's not.
I'm agreeing with you. And if he amends this to consider this as the resolution, it could be accepted as such.
I would, I would so move that we amend that would, to be the resolution that we.
I second that amendment.
Did we even have a second to that motion?
Not yet. But you had both the amendment and then you had both the motion.
I mean.
You, you, you know, you don't, you haven't, there's no second, there's nothing to amend. You can amend.
Okay. So I still wait the second.
Can I second it?
Sure.
I'll second it.
Mr. Hazlett?
No, there, he's, he made, he made his motion be the resolution. He's saying this is the resolution.
No, I didn't, Steve amended the motion.
But there was not a second, so then you can, you can just say, oh, I changed my mind. My motion is to make this a resolution to.
Without an amendment.
Yes.
So I move that the Oak Hill City Council authorize the Oak Hill Commission to act as a fiscal agent for the purpose of entering into a lease purchase agreement, lease purchase agreement with Gray Mill Holdings for a cost of $675,000 to include closing costs, and this will stand as the resolution.
I'll second.
Right, I can move to second. Number two is will stand as the resolution. Any more discussion? Hearing them, or to call the roll.
Counselor Hazlett?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Smallwood?
Yes.
Oxley?
No.
Janey?
I'm totally confused.
I'm just voting yes.
Would you like a copy? We're just voting on how to pay for it now, the next step, the agent.
This is putting the.
Resolution process.
To handle the process.
Is that not something you handled before yourself?
Yeah, but that's where, that's not going to be the way. It's not going to happen that way, so. Can we come back to you?
So Steve, say that one more time.
This is moving to have a resolution to appoint the Building Commission as the agent that will handle the property acquisition.
Where before, Dometas, is that where you've always stood in before and done that?
This is just, yeah. Yeah, we've just done this later in the process, we're just doing it earlier now.
I guess it'll be yes.
Krista?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I move that the Oak Hill City Council authorize the Oak Hill City Manager or Treasurer to make installment payments from revenue generated from the 1% sales tax to the Oak Hill Building, Building Commission on behalf of the City of Oak Hill for said purpose. And again, I'd reiterate that counsel advised it, it has to be a non-committed fund, short of a tax on people, short of an increased tax, or another, whichever one you say. This has already been done, it comes effective July 1, and it's uncommitted funds. And I would again repeat myself to say, we have been informed, told that the projected amount would be 750-some thousand dollars or up to 1.2 million, which more than adequately, more than adequately allows for a payment of this, just as there's been payments for the fire department, the police department, so. So I would ask for a second to the motion.
There's a second. I'll move the second, any more discussion, number three. Hearing them, or to call the roll.
Steve?
She always picks only first. She usually starts over there and works her way around.
I already have it in this order, so.
Yes.
Benitez?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Tom?
No.
Diana?
No.
Krista?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I move that the Oak Hill City Council employ on behalf of the City of Oak Hill Building Commission Steptoe and Johnson as the official bond counsel.
Is this who we usually work with? With stuff like this?
No, I, I do know, um, John Stumpf and, but I have not worked with him on this type of thing, but I, he's very, he's, he's fine.
As I said, Steptoe and Johnson, as Domeno has indicated or suggested, is a very competent firm. This is not new to them, they have five attorneys committed to this project. And Steptoe and Johnson indicates they've worked with Mr. Fowle on numerous projects and find him to be very compatible. And I'm sure that he would work alongside if Domeno had questions. And then come back to square eight, it would relieve some of the duties and responsibilities that Mrs. Johnson has had or would have around the fire department and the other projects we've talked about, unless we go there out on them also.
Can I second that motion? Hearing them, we'll vote the motion, if the clerk to call the roll.
Steve?
Yes.
Benitez?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Tom?
No.
Diana?
No.
Krista?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. Mayor, not to put you on the spot, would you have any comments you would offer or you would choose not to at this time?
However, if I could have voted on this, this particular issue, I would have voted in the affirmative. But I would like to say this regarding the city council people here. All seven of them, I think, are honorable, decent, bright, and very civic-minded towards their city. And I do hope and pray that this vote on this city hall move will not be a dividing force in, in going forward with Oak Hill City business. It's too important, the city's too important. So those are just a few comments I would make regarding this, this, this action tonight. And those are the only two issues on the call, the one was regarding.
I'd like to request that your remarks be entered into the minutes as they have been presented, rather than just say general comments, if that's agreeable as a mayor.
All right, I'll be fine. I, since there, the, the two items on the call have been talked about and dispensed with, so this special meeting of the Oak Hill City Council is adjourned.
I know, I met you at Jenny's Christmas party. No, Jordan is a junior now, she can't go to government.